Welcome to the Ward 6 Town Meeting Live from Friendship Public Child Schools at Tamlin Campus in Washington DC. I am Lance Spencer.
I'm Nafisa Weeks.
I'm Anna Robinson.
With the Elliott High Network. This broadcast is being brought to you by Elliott High's TV on Ustream and the Detroit News Network.
Tonight, many of our friends, colleagues, and neighbors are here to discuss issues of importance to you and others. Mayor Mario Bowser, Ward 6 Councilmember Charles Allen, Councilmember-at-Large Anita Barnes, and the DC Attorney's Office will discuss affordable housing and services for the homeless.
In addition, they will address issues on crime prevention and crime enforcement. Join us and let your voice be heard on these important topics affecting our community.
I am Lance Spencer.
I'm Nafisa Weeks.
I'm Anna Robinson.
With the Elliott High Network. Stay tuned, the program will begin soon.
Why must we continue to invest in the District of Columbia?
It's very important to invest in the District of Columbia because it has a rich history for our people. It's very, very important that the world, the country knows how important the District of Columbia is. I've been here over thirty years, and I've seen the bad part and I've seen the good part, but some of the old needs to come back, and that's the community working together.
Talk to us about the importance of communities working together in order to solve issues within their neighborhood.
It's very important for all of the different wards to connect together so we can continue to live and be Chocolate City or Cream City or whatever you want to say.
Thank you for joining us today.
You're welcome.
Talk to us about why this event is important to voters in the District of Columbia.
Well, I can tell you why it's important to this vote. Town halls have been an important part of our government for a long time, and it's a way that the people we elect can keep talking to us after we elect them and make sure that we are informed about what's going on and they're informed about how we feel. So it's a kind of a direct communication, doesn't exist everywhere in the world, and we're lucky to have it here and really happy to have it in Ward 6.
In your opinion, what crime preventative steps can we take to protect our community?
Well, I think the most important thing is for every citizen to be informed and educated about being safe on the street. You know, don't walk down with your cellphone out, you know, the usual measures. So everybody's got to be careful about limiting their exposure. After that, I think we've got two ways to answer that. There's the big question, the big question is what do we do about poverty? What do we do about joblessness? What do we do about getting people better educated and better prepared for the workforce? That's the big questions. The smaller questions is how do we fix a criminal justice system here so that the people who do commit crimes get justice? We had a problem on the street, I think, with people committing the same crimes over and over and over again, back on the street over and over again. Everybody's frustrated with it. I hope we can do something about it.
The topic of tonight's event is affordable housing, service for homeless, crime prevention, and criminal enforcement. Why is this event important to you?
Well, first off, thank you guys so much for helping host this. I mean, we're doing the live feed, you're helping make a lot of people be able to know about this program. Maybe you can't make it tonight, so thank you so much for helping host and being a part of this conversation, so thank you. The conversation night, I hope, is going to be a great one. We're going to be talking about homeless services, affordable housing, public safety. These are all issues that we care about in every one of our neighborhoods, and I think, not just Ward 6, but really the whole city, we're all trying to find solutions to these problems to just keep making our city a great place to live.
Why is it important to encourage citizens of the District of Columbia to speak out if they see a crime?
Well, if they see a crime, we want people to speak up and definitely call 911 and let people know that what they've seen. But we also want, though, residents to help be a part of the solutions. You know, there's not a single crime that's going to be one, any crime is one too many. So we want people to be able to help be a part of the solution. What's happening in the neighborhood that this took place? Do we need to work on lighting? Do we need to work on safe routes to schools? Do we need to work on how we help somebody have other opportunities? How do we help keep our communities safe? I want people to definitely call 911 if they see a crime, but really, I encourage people, and young people as well, be a part of the solutions. Help us figure out the problems, and then let's work towards solutions for them.
Talk to us about the importance of having a town meeting.
Well, a town hall's a lot of fun because, one, we get to have our neighbors come in and tell us what things going right. You're going to hear people also say what they think's not going right, and as an elected official, part of my job is to make sure that I can hear that, explain those type of steps that we're taking, the things that we're doing in our community, but also be able to respond to people's criticism. This is part of democracy, right? Not everybody in this room's going to agree with everything that I do. You may not even agree with everything I do. But my job is to stand here, let me tell you a little bit what I've done, you tell me what you'd like me to do differently, or tell me that you like what I've done, and that's part of democracy. And that's part of why a town hall is a really great conversation with our neighbors, and again, it's a big part of our city.
Talk to us about why this event is important to voters in the District of Columbia.
I think it's important for the voters of the District of Columbia to hear their officials, to be able to interact with their official, to ask questions, and hear what they have to say about their future.
In your opinion, what crime preventive steps can we take to protect our community?
I think a lot of the crime in our community can probably be best prevented if we allow people to participate in the development of communities, the creation of their community, and to respect people for the value that they bring.
Why is it important to encourage citizens of the District of Columbia to speak out if they see a crime?
Well, crime threatens us all. If the crime occurs in one place and you see it, then that means it's close enough to happen to you, so you should report it.
... discussing this evening. We have these little blue boxes around the side and back of the hall, and they're community comment boxes. If you wanted to take your card, put your question on there, and the name of contact, we'll be sure to give you the answer for you and have somebody go back and touch it with you with specific information on answering the question. So without further ado, I'd first like to introduce our first speaker this evening, our Honorable Ward 6 Councilmember Charles Allen. If you could give him a hand.
All right, good evening, everybody. How are you doing? Excellent, well, thank you for coming out tonight. Thank you to the Ward 6 Dems for hosting this neighborhood and community conversation. When I walked in, I thought we were coming into like an Iowa caucus for a little bit, but this is open for everybody. The Ward 6 Dems are hosting, but this is certainly no party loyalty pledge is being required. This is something where it's just a great conversation, so I appreciate the Ward 6 Dems for pulling it together, along with so many other partners that are helping tonight. Also, in case you missed it, Elliott High Middle School is live streaming our entire meeting, and so let's give them a round of applause. The man behind the scenes is Mandrel Burks, who's helped run this program. This is the only program with the DC Public Schools that has a live radio and TV program. A couple of years ago, when President Obama was doing his inauguration and his parade down Pennsylvania Avenue, Mr. Burks and I worked it out. We turned the office overlooking Pennsylvania Avenue at the Wilson Building into a studio, and we had students from the middle school broadcast live the entire parade as the president came down, so it was a really cool event. But Mr. Burks has been doing this for years, so thank you very much for helping do this. So what I wanted to do is talk a little bit about a couple of different issues. I know that Chuck outlined a couple of topics for this evening. There may be a few other topics to go over, I'm happy to do that. My hunch is there's also just a good Q and A and good back and forth and conversation, and so I'm happy to facilitate that for a little bit, but I also know we have some other speakers, including Anita Barnes, who will be here, who's an at-large council member, and then, I don't know when, but then Mayor Bowser will be here as well. So looking forward to the conversation this evening. I also will go ahead and let you know, I have to leave a little bit later in the meeting because there's another big meeting happening in Southwest tonight, and so I'm going to have to get down to the Southwest neighborhood for one of their big meetings a little bit later, so if you see me slip out towards the end, that's where I'm headed. I wanted to give you an update on a couple of things, and then we'll move to kind of the discussion phase. When we think about the first topic that Chuck had mentioned, we think about our homeless services. I do want to let people know, give you a little bit of an update of what's coming on that, as well as frankly, I'm going to ask for your support, too. We know that just down the block, we've got way too many people that are dependent upon DC General to be their home. It is not a place where anybody or any child or any family should have to spend the night, and it is our de facto homeless shelter, and it does not serve our city and the residents that need those services very well. Now, for those of you that have been here for a long time, I recall when we all got together there when the city was first saying, "We're going to make this a temporary homeless shelter," and that was many, many years ago. I do want to give credit, the mayor and her team have actually outlined a plan that I think is going to end and close DC General and is going to replace it with a much smarter and a better way than we provide homeless services. I hope, and the mayor may talk about this in just a little bit when she gets here, that we're going to start to see some of the actions that'll take place, but I'll give you a little bit of what's going to happen. Rather than have one centralized place in our city where we say, "Let's go put 400, 500 families into a space," we're going to move to a model of providing homeless services, especially family-based homeless services, that has smaller, newer, and rehabilitated facilities. These are going to be neighborhood-based facilities, and rather than concentrating one place in the city, we're going to spread them out across all the wards. Ward 6 will also host one of these, but we will close DC General, and I think that's something that's very commendable, and I think it's the right thing, it is absolutely the right thing for us to do. It is not a safe place for our, it's a place of last resort. So we've got a, we've got a plan that's going to be starting to move forward. What's going to happen is there are going to be sites that are identified, they're going to be respectful places, they're going to be quality places, they're going to be places where families are able to stay, and the ideal is, we want homelessness to be brief and non-recurring. We don't want anybody to be spending months in a homeless shelter. We want to have these type of spaces that are available for somebody when they're in need, and we do have a homelessness crisis in our city, but this is the right way to provide this care, and I'm very proud of the way that we're moving forward together. And I'm going to ask Ward 6 to do its share, and to make sure that we stand up and we say, when we figure out exactly where it's going to be and how it's going to work out, I want Ward 6 to be proudly standing there saying, "This is what we do for our neighbors. We look after one another, we're going to do it in a respectful way, in a way that's high-quality, that helps to take care of our families," but that's what we expect. Now, once the mayor rules out her plan, which hopefully is sometime soon, the next step will likely be a series of community meetings, there'll be, I'm sure, a hearing at the council where we'll want to hear feedback about how do we make them successful? My challenge to my neighbors is going to be to not say, "Not here," but to say, "How do we make this be successful? How do we make sure that these families are taken care of, and how do we make it work for our city and for our residents?" So I hope that I can count on you, I hope that I can have you join me in that, to make sure that we've got a much smarter, and a better, and a more humane way that we provide our homeless services, but that's the direction that we're headed. And we can talk a little bit more about that if you'd like in the Q and A phase, but I wanted to share that. There's another piece that I wanted to touch on, we'll spend maybe a little bit more time, and I have a hunch there may be some more questions about this as well. It wasn't but a couple of months ago, we were in this very room, or at least some of us were in this very room, and we talked a great deal about public safety in our neighborhoods and in our communities. And the room was packed, we had every seat that was filled, and the chief was here, I was here, Kevin Donahue, who's the deputy mayor who's over here as well, he was here joining us, and we were trying to outline some of the responses and the strategies that the city was taking to work on public safety. I know I've talked with a lot of you about the different things that I've done, whether it's working with the chief to get more resources put into our neighborhood so that we've got more officers, we've got the bike tactical units, we've got other things that we need to help keep our neighborhood safe and have a better response. I know I've talked to several of you about what we've done in terms of moving forward on a budget. Let's put millions of dollars into MPD and into public safety in general. There's also an effort yesterday that the council passed legislation that I think is going to make a big difference in how we go after and improve public safety. Now, there's one reporter who put a little headline in AP that I think created a lot of confusion, and I can touch on that and answer more questions about it, but we passed a comprehensive public safety piece of legislation yesterday that had a lot of different elements. It did two main things. One, it put in immediate tools, tools that can be used immediately to help support our community and our public safety forces. It also makes a significant investment in how we come up with long-term strategies to keep our neighborhood safe. It cannot be, and we talked about this when we were here a couple of months ago, we cannot be only, "How do we just arrest and arrest and arrest?" We need to ensure that there is accountability, we need to ensure that there is certainty when a crime takes place, there are consequences, there's accountability, but if that's the only thing that we're doing, we are not solving the underlying problems, and we've got to be smart about this, and we've got to make sure that we're doing things, at the end of the day, make our community, make our neighborhood safer. And that's been how I've tried to approach this as we've looked at it. A couple of things that the legislation does. One of the first things it does, it gives the DC Superior Courts now a new ability they didn't have previously, and that is that if somebody is out on, basically on a release, it works with pre-trial services, and if they violate a stay-away order, if they tamper with a GPS monitoring device, that device is on there for a reason. It now gives the courts the authority to have what's called a 72-hour hold, or up to a 72-hour hold. I think this is an important tool for the courts to have, because if somebody is trying to take off their GPS device, I don't think they're doing it for the best reasons. So I think this is a good tool to put into the hands of the courts and to have them be able to use that to help pull someone in and try to find out what's going on. It could be that they're in crisis, it could be that we've got somebody who's got mental health issues, substance abuse issues, and we need to figure what that out, figure out what that is. There may be other issues involved with that, but that's one piece of what this does. Another element of what this legislation does, something that I think is important to me and something I partnered really well with the mayor on, and that was, it makes permanent the security camera rebate program. I moved legislation in January to create, on an emergency basis, the ability for us to create a program that businesses, residents, religious institutions, nonprofits can do exterior cameras on their property to help make sure that in the event something does take place, if a crime takes place, they have to register that with MPD, but we have footage of that. And that came from looking at MPD's own feed. If you look through the videos they share where they ask for our help, and they say, "Please, help, can you identify the suspect? Can you help us out?" About a full quarter of the videos they share asking for the public's help come from private residences or from businesses. So this is something that's going to help, the legislation makes it permanent, and so again, one of the ways, and I appreciate this is a very collaborative effort both with the mayor and the members of the council to put that piece in. Another thing it does is it's going to change up the way that we allow for what we call the Department of Forensic Services. Those, that's basically our crime lab, that's our version of CSI. Doesn't quite work like the TV show, but it allows us to hire retired police officers to fill a lot of the jobs with that forensic services, which then allows us to have our police officers back out on the street on the patrols of where we, where we actually want them and where we need them. Another thing that it does that's going to make, I believe, an immediate impact as well is put in a set of tools that helps with the type of recruitment and retention of our officers. You've probably read headlines, you've read stories about a concern of, "Is our police force dipping down below a number that we want?" That can help make sure that they're in our neighborhoods. These are some more tools that we can put in the toolbox to help make sure we're recruiting the best police officers. We do have phenomenal police officers on the force, but we also have a retirement bubble coming, and we have a lot of our command staff, the officers that are in leadership positions, that are coming up and are eligible for retirement. And so we're going to lose a lot of that skill, a lot of that leadership, and so we need to be coming up with those tools, and that's part of what this legislation does. It also has long-term investments, has a large number of investments that go into how we work on legislation related to what we call good-time credits. So when someone is incarcerated, and they're going to be a returning citizen, we want them to be successful. If they're engaging in education, they're engaging in job skills training, they're getting their GED, they're taking those positive steps, they can earn good-time credits, which helps them on a more positive track to re-enter our community and cuts down on recidivism. Another piece, and this is going to be the controversial one that I think people have seen in the newspaper, is that it creates a program up to 50 people where we try to say, "Who are the most high-risk people?" One of the things you'll hear everybody talk about is that the majority of crime is committed by a small number of people over and over and over again. So how do we get at that? One of those tools, as we've seen other cities have been able to use, is to go in and target who those individuals are, and then enroll them into different programs, enroll them into positive things, and then the part where the headline talked, and I'm just going to go and put it out there because so many people have read about it, talking about paying someone who's committed crimes. What it does is it creates a stipend that allows people that when you're taking these positive steps, meeting these different benchmarks, that you're creating that pathway. I'll be honest, I look at this a little bit in the same way, what's one of the reasons that we do summer youth employment program? We want to make sure we're creating a positive experience for our young people. It's a, it's a good thing. We pay them to make sure that we're having a good experience and a positive outcome. That's part of what this does. It's an unfunded part of the bill, but I know it may be one of the more controversial pieces, but it's one part of an overall package, and I'm happy to answer questions about that in a little bit, but I want to make sure that I kind of lay that out for everybody. So the legislation overall is one part of what we're working on. We'll continue to keep working on different strategies. I know we have the budget that's about to come up, and that's going to be something where we need to continue working with the mayor, working with the council, to make sure we're funding different strategies, but I think that overall, this is a package of legislation that's going to make our community safer. We, when the mayor gets up or other things, and also talk about some of the other steps we've taken, such as the Joint Task Force on robbery prevention, which has already led to a lot of great results and some very key arrests on that, and the other efforts that are ongoing. Now, I wanted to speak real briefly before I turn it over, a couple of quick things that are coming up. First off, just today, we started what we call our oversight and our budget season. We had an audit, every year the council, the city goes through an annual audit, we call it the CAFER, we love our acronyms, and it's, it's an annual review. We started that today, and we start our oversight hearings. I encourage everybody to come out, come to these oversight hearings, I think it's a great where you can come tell us what you think is working, what's not working, and how we work to make our agencies more responsive and improve their services. Following that, we'll then go into the budget cycle. In late March, the mayor puts out her budget, and then we started a series of budget hearings. We come back, bring all the agency directors back in front of the city council, and we go through all of that. We test their budget, we want to find out what they're doing, what's working, what's not. Your input's an important part of that. Now, last year, one of the things I did is I held a Ward 6 Budget Town Hall meeting. Last year, we did it in Southwest. It was a great way for, not everybody, let's be honest, everybody's working most of the times during the day, right? That's when we hold our hearings. So not everybody can make it down there. So what I do is I take an evening, we turn it into a budget town hall, and we really, I feel like get a lot of great feedback. I'm able to help share with you some of my budget priorities and I'm working through the budget, but also I hear back from you. What do you think are the right priorities? What do you think you want to see a different focus on? And so I encourage you to come to that. It's going to be April 21st. Last year, we did it on H Street, this year, or last year, Southwest. This year, we're going to do it on H Street, over at the new building that's our DHS building. We'll make sure we get the address out, but it's on April 21st, we'll get to everybody all the details on that. But I'll walk through the budget, but it's a great opportunity to also hear from you. You tell me what are your priorities, what are, what do you think is working, what's not, and, and it's just one other way that I try to make sure that, especially for folks who have other things going in the middle of the day, that you can make sure your voice is heard. I think that's an incredibly important part of that. You also have the mayor coming in 30 minutes or so. She'll stand up here, and it's a great opportunity to also tell her what you want to see. That's, that's why we do these town halls. Couple of quick initiatives, tomorrow, we're going to be formally and officially launching Books from Birth. This was the, kind of the first big legislation that I introduced and got through the council. What this is going to do is really attack early childhood literacy, and so kids zero to five, every kid in our city is going to have books that are mailed directly into their home.
Yes.
Yes. This is, we know if we wait until third grade, and we wait until an achievement gap shows up, we know what, what happens. We chase our tails, we try to come up with programs, and we're going to try to stop that gap from getting any bigger than it already is. We have got to stop trying to just focus then, but actually, that achievement gap is based on the experience that those kids have, zero to five, zero to three. Early childhood literacy and family literacy is the biggest predictor of where you see that achievement gap come up later on. And so this is one of the strategies that we're going to use to attack this. I'm going to make sure that we get you all the information about it. I need your help, making sure we're enrolling families in this. It's already gotten a great response so far, but I think it can make a really big difference. And tomorrow, the mayor and I are standing together with the libraries, and we're going to be kicking this off. It's going to be a whole lot of fun, and I think it's going to be really impactful for our young families. Low literacy and the literacy runs in families, and just to tell someone who's low literacy, "Just, just go to the library." If you don't read, the library is a very intimidating place to go. And so we need to get these books into the homes, and then link in family literacy programming into that, and that's what this program is going to do, and I'm really excited about that. Couple other pieces that are going to be coming soon, I hope you'll see, and Ms. Barnes might be able to talk about this later as well. We work together on something called a Safe at Home Initiative, and that's something to help make sure that, especially as we talk about aging in place in our community, in many cases, people need to make little modifications to their homes. They're not a whole lot of cost, but sometimes that cost is a barrier, and it makes a difference between somebody being able to stay in their home or not. It could be everything from a ramp to the front door, it could be everything from a grab bar in the bathroom, but these types of things help make sure that people can stay in their home and age successfully within their home, within their neighborhood, within their community. And so Ms. Barnes and I have been working on legislation on that, and it's something that I hope we're going to be able to move forward very soon, something I'm very excited about. The last thing I'll mention, hopefully you saw a little bit about it, I've launched another effort called Made in DC. For anybody out here who's a small business or an entrepreneur, one of the things that we have in our city is a boatload of entrepreneurs and amazing things that are made here in DC. It's a great part of our economy. Go to New York, go to Chicago, go to pretty much any other great city, and one of the things they do is they have pride in their city, and the things that are created in their city, the things that New Yorkers make, that Chicagoans make. We have a phenomenal community of makers, of artists, of all kinds of great people here, right here in DC. I think the city should be doing a lot more, and so we're launching a Made in DC initiative. We had a phenomenal hearing about this, and it's something we're really going to be moving forward soon to, help support our entrepreneurs, the makers, the folks that you see at Eastern Market, folks you see at our markets day in and day out, they're just doing phenomenal work, so I'm excited about that. So one of the things about a town hall that I love, you get to hear from me for a while, but I want to hear from you. So what I think would be best, Chuck, unless you want me to do something different, what do you want me to do? Ask people to come to the mics? All right, so here's what we're going to do. We're going to open it up, I would love to be able to answer as many questions as I can. There seem to be two microphones, one on each side here. I'm going to take Chuck's guidance, which is to ask people just to go to the microphone and ask their question there, and be happy to answer that. If you can, maybe tell us who you are, or what neighborhood you're from, and then try to make your question, I guess, as concise as possible, and I'll try to make my answer as concise as possible. Yes?
Can you hear me?
Nope.
I just have a comment. I want to thank you for your leadership on the council. I think that your constituents and my neighbors in Ward 5 are very pleased with the work that you've done, and the level of collaboration that you have with the mayor's office in making our city safer. As you know, we share a common water, and I'm really, really happy with the work that you've done. So thank you.
Well, thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you very much. There's another microphone over to my right over here, too, if there's anybody on this side of the room. And if the mics aren't working, I'll just repeat the question really loudly. Denise is one of the quietest people you'll meet, so I'll try to, try to amplify that.
My name is Denise Grabb, I'm the A.C. Commissioner for 6B10, and my question for you, Charles, will you support my change on the petition asking the Department of Justice to start compiling prosecution data for crimes that occurred here in Washington DC? I started the change on the petition because I FOIA DOJ for this information, and surprisingly enough, the response I got back from the Department of Justice was they couldn't find any records. We have homicides, we have rapes, we have assaults, we've got thefts, and apparently DOJ didn't find the data. So my request to you, and I'm sorry for speaking so quickly with my microphone, is will you support the change on the petition, and will you help me in putting pressure on DOJ to start compiling this data so we can better understand who these recidivists are and how we get them off our streets?
Yes, and yes. So happy to support the petition, and I think, you know, we've been working on trying to help also figure out, are there other ways to get some of that data? So if we're not able to get it from one source, are there alternate sources where we can pull some of that? I know, I think you met with my staff just last week about trying to think through other I know, I think you met with my staff just last week about trying to think through other ways, if we run into a roadblock one place, about how we can do that. I think that, to the underlying part of your point, which is, how do we have our public safety agencies collect data in a meaningful way? How is it communicated? How is it something where there's accountability? The, the, the piece that is a frustration, or I should say, it's definitely a challenge, is the accountability between the district government and then our entities related to our courts. So, the US Attorney's Office is not subject to the council or to DC. DC Superior Courts is separate. So, we do have a, a relationship where the district is writing the rules and writing the laws, but we don't, we prosecute some of the crimes and not all the crimes, and so I think we're trying to think through ways, and that, that we share the data and then also make it public, make it transparent in a way that works across these different jurisdictions, these different agencies, that are not all even DC agencies, which is a unique challenge I think we face here in the district. But yes, happy to help support that. Yes, Anne?
Hey, I am Anne Arcanti, and I live in Ward 6, as you know. Charles, I am a small business owner, I don't know if you're aware of that, and one of the things that I would be interested in is, I understand that there's a federal health insurance option for spouse, for a single plus spouse, as opposed to a family, and I understand that that's a much more reasonable cost, insurance policy, health policy, than a family policy, and obviously, more, which is what I need for, for a spouse plus one. And I would be interested in seeing if you could help find a way for Blue Cross Blue Shield, which offers it to federal employees, if they could offer it in the DC health marketplace.
Happy to work with you on that. And I know that we know how to get in touch with each other, so I'm happy to follow, it may be a little more complicated than, than right here, but happy to do that, is also explore, are there mechanisms with a DC Health Link that are either not working, and that's part of what we need to think through? And so, I'm happy to work with you on that. Also, again, as we have oversight hearings that come up, this is a perfect type of issue, great feedback, so that I can also not only work with you on it, but then also try to figure out systemically, as we have DC Health Link and others, the Health Exchange come before the council, ask them these types of questions about where are the barriers, and if you're not able to get that access to the coverage that you need, how do we help you achieve that?
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Anne. Got to be more questions.
We had one question from the audience. In regard to the homeless shelters that are built, being built in each of the ward, I know that it's, the plans haven't been fully developed on implementation and opening. But what are your initial thought as far as what type of services can accompany that, to help the integration into the neighborhood and also the clients that they serve? And in addition, what can we do as a community to assist in that?
Well, thank you. So, I think, we can start with what doesn't work, right? Just down the street, we can see that when you have a shuttered hospital and you try to convert it into a homeless shelter, it's not going to be successful. You don't have people, you don't have the services that you need, you're not providing the quality and respectful type of housing. It is a place that is really, it truly is last resort. The approach that we're trying to take, which is going to be smaller, more neighborhood-based type of shelters, are going to do a couple of things. I think, one, it's going to provide more respectful housing, it's going to be either new construction or it's going to be renovation, it's going to be a healthier space to live. But it's also going to be paired up with services, so that there are services being provided inside that building to help that person figure out permanent housing. Is it an issue around, frequently, people have trouble getting identification. How do you help navigate that? If anybody's tried to renew their license with real ID, you know how that creates a challenge or a hurdle, especially if you're homeless. If you, if you're a returning citizen, you're coming out of jail, those are things you don't have laying around, but it takes a lot of work to that, and that's why we have to do service providing right there. But also, making sure people have the service they need. Many times, when someone's homeless, there's a lot of underlying issues. Nobody really just chooses to say, "I'd like to be homeless." There could be anything from childcare issues and job training issues, to issues of substance abuse or mental health. And so, having the services provided, because it's, every case is so unique and so complicated, I think is a big part of how we make it successful. In terms of how we, we have the community help, like, like I said earlier, I'm going to challenge all of my Ward 6 neighbors to be invested in this being successful. How do we make this work? And I'm going to call on all of us to help, help be a part of that. Thank you.
I have a question concerning the shelters, okay? How will they implement mental health situations with the people? Because, see, number one, many of the facilities I've seen, they're not addressing mental illness. There are no social workers there to address that. And so, you have people that are being steered into apartment buildings and, and other places that they really shouldn't be, okay? And it creates an environment of fear, okay? We have such a thing as that going on in our building. And so, how is that going to be addressed with these shelters being put into neighborhoods?
Sure. And I'm going to answer the things that I can answer, then I know that we also have folks from the mayor's office who are going to be helping, who can probably give a lot more detail than I can, around the specifics of how it's going to actually operate, so to not get myself in trouble by saying things I don't really know, I'll make sure that we connect you with some of the mayor's homeless services. But, the way I understand it, we have, from the council's perspective and from the city's perspective, we need to make sure that we've got good oversight of the, of the contracts that we have for providing services, right? So, right now, we have a contract for providing those types of services at DC General or other places. And I think that we've seen that the services have not been where we want them to be, and I think there's good questions that need to be asked about whether or not we're seeing and getting the type of results that we want for that public investment. Now, I think we're going to see a very different approach in terms of, rather than a, a place where you're going to have, you know, 300, 400 families all staying in one big concentrated place, by having a smaller neighborhood-based shelter, you give an opportunity for that social worker, for those types of services, to be in a much more one-on-one setting, or in a family-based setting. I think that sets you up for more success than you do when you have a caseload scattered about a hospital. So, I think that we're going to set ourselves up for success, partly just in the way in which we're having a very different approach to this, with these smaller neighborhood-based facilities, where you can get the type of direct services and, and, and resources that a family needs to be successful. To the specific issue around your building, I'd be more than happy to have somebody from my staff also follow up with you, if there is a problem, can work with you to understand what's going on, because if we've got somebody who's in crisis, or somebody who is creating a negative experience for their neighbors, and it's because they've been placed into that housing, definitely let me know about that, we'll follow up after this, so that I can get some more specifics from you on that, so that we can follow up and, and make sure that either that person's getting what they need, so that they're successful in that placement, or if it's not the right placement, we can work on alternatives as well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay? Thank you very much. I do want to acknowledge too, if I can real fast, that we've been joined by my at-large council member, at-large colleague, council member Vincent Orange. So, I think I've got time for one or two more questions before I need to hand off the mic. We'll go over to this side. Martin?
If I can, for your attempts to get in Street Park and Shaw, council member Director Anderson promised you and Councilman Richey that he has recommendations on the December and Thursday of July in Shaw. The update is that while I have a very good working relationship with Director Anderson, I have not seen what you're referring to. So, the response to that review of that park and other sites, that's also why we have oversight hearings. So, what my expectation would be is, is we have DPR come before the council for our oversight hearing, which I can't remember the exact date off the top of my head, but it's coming up in the next couple of weeks, but that's part of what I'll ask the director for, and either he's going to come there or, and, and give us that information, or we're going to have to make sure that we get it. Because I think that was a promise made, not just to me, but I think really to the whole community, to the Shaw community around In Street Park as well, where we've seen some violence. Thank you, Martin.
So, I'm Deborah Frazier, community organizer and resident associated with Arthur Kaper Carlsberg Community. My questions are related to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. One, when can the city council decide to change the definition of affordable housing from DC from $60,000 to $30,000, which is median income for many district residents? Secondly, when, when, oh, when is a city going to use the Affordable Housing Trust Fund to actually build affordable housing? And, can you, so, I got a lot of questions, but can you, can there be some agreement to hold harmless that $100,000? Because many initiatives that the city council wants to introduce, there's talk, you go in Affordable Housing Trust Fund, dip in there, last year, you dipped into it for summer jobs program, so, one, can you change affordable housing numbers from $60,000, 60% of AMI, to 30% AMI? Two, when will you begin to use the trust to actually build affordable housing or renovate? Some of the many hundreds of empty buildings that we see, I forget what the other one was.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Frazier. So, in terms of, let me take one step back from the percentages, just to make sure everybody knows what we're talking about. So, when we talk about affordable housing, we typically talk about it in terms of what we call the area median income. So, sometimes you'll hear people throw around the phrase AMI, 100% AMI, 60% of AMI, 30% of AMI. Area median income for the DC region roughly is about $100,000. So, people, it's not exact, but it's roughly, so for the standpoint of making the numbers simple, 100% of AMI is roughly $100,000 a year salary. So, we have different bands of affordability, so sometimes what we do is we focus on affordability at 80% of AMI, which really means somebody who's making 80,000 or more, or 8,000 or less, excuse me. We'll say 60%, we'll say 30%, and that roughly translates into 60,000 or 30,000, and that's, I think, what you mean. I, I think the way that we make affordable housing successful is when we use those bands and we vary them, that there, there is housing that we make that is dedicated to saying, "We've got to have housing that we create and that we preserve," that is at 30,000 and below. That is really folks who are, we, what we call our working poor, our low income. That's, that is where you see housing disappearing, the affordability incredibly fast, as well as family-based housing. That's something that's really important to me. 60,000 and 80,000, or 60% AMI, 80% AMI, you start to get to more of a working. For a lot of people, even making 80,000, it's a hard time to find housing in our city. And so, that's why I think being successful is to use those different bands, so that there's times when we're creating 30, there's 60, there's 80, there's 100, and we intersperse that so that we make it more successful. In terms of the Housing Protection Trust Fund, so that was funded in last year's budget with a significant commitment that was both from the mayor and the council, and I think it was a great thing for us to do, which is $100 million. Now, dollars are being spent on that. Just yesterday, we approved funds that go to Plaza West, and our mayor's here, so let's give a quick welcome to the mayor. So, just yesterday is an example. We approved legislation, it was a contract that the city entered into for Plaza West, which is an affordable housing development that's going to be taking place in, right off of, kind of in the Mount Vernon Triangle neighborhood of Ward 6, if you're, if anybody's familiar with that. It is what we call grandfamily housing. In our city, we have a lot of households that are being led by a grandmother, by a grandfather, by a grand-aunt, and there's a real need for that type of housing. And so, this is a program that works with the Housing Protection Trust Fund to help fund that. And it's going to have, again, those different bands of affordability, it's going to have family-based housing, and it's going to be making sure that we are, are creating housing. And for anybody who's familiar with the Mount Vernon Triangle neighborhood, that is a neighborhood that is rapidly becoming unaffordable for many, for many folks. And so, that's why I've, I've been a big supporter of that project, and it's something that we're putting those resources in, because it's going to be, I think, very, very important for us to make sure that we're creating the type of housing that we need, and the type that you're describing. That's just one example. I could certainly work to try to get you more, you know, more examples of that. The, you know, I have found Holly Donaldson, who heads the, our kind of housing and community development agency, I found her to be a really great partner, could work with her on, if there's an issue kind of around communications and how we get that out. But I found her to be a good partner. We, we've had good conversations around different projects around our city, in particular Ward 6, where we're trying to use the Housing Protection Trust Fund to make sure that we're both preserving and creating the type of housing that you're describing.
Can you hold that fund, hold it harmless, so that you're not dipping into it, whatever city serves, and it doesn't happen?
Let me, let me follow up with you, because I'm not sure if I quite understand what you mean when you say "hold harmless of the Housing Protection Trust Fund," because it's a dedicated fund.
That money is in the housing, or the normal housing trust fund, will not be used for anything else except for housing?
I, I think it's being used very strongly for housing, but I'm happy to make sure we follow up to get you an answer to that question, of course, absolutely. So, I think my clock is out. Thank you all very much, I appreciate everybody for coming out for this, this is a great conversation, thank you. Have a great night. Thanks, Chuck.
Thank you. Good, have another round of applause for councilmember. I did want to remind, we already have a number of questions coming in, and because we want to hear, of course, the speakers and answer as many questions as possible, we do have a time limit. I do want to assure you, as I mentioned, the community boxes that we have around, we will diligently find the answers. If you'd like to put your name on it, we'll get back to you. We'll try to get your questions and concerns to the right people, and I will also be, you know, we also plan on posting those, our results in a section on our website. So, we do not want to let any question or concern go unanswered because of time limitations, but it's just a necessity of this type of format. I would, at this time, like to introduce to the stage our mayor. We live in a very diverse and exciting time in Washington, and with her leadership, we're at, we are entering a new Washington. There are many challenges in front of us, but I think we've seen numerous times already where we've been coming up with creative solutions and approaches for short-term issues, but also for long-term problems. And I'm proud to introduce at this time, our mayor, Uriel Bowser.
Thank you, thank you. Well, good evening, Democrats. It's wonderful to be here, and good evening to everybody in Ward 6 that wants to come and talk about how we can make together our communities even greater. Let me thank your councilmember, Charles Allen, give him a big round of applause. That's good applause, Charles, they like you. And, and let me also acknowledge at-large councilmember Vincent Orange, give him a big round of applause. Also, big applause, councilmember. And I just wanted to come and give you a quick briefing, and I know that there have already been a lot of questions, and Chuck, whenever you want me to stop talking, you let me know, but I'm happy to answer questions while people have questions. And so, I asked Chuck if he could come out and provide a quick briefing to the community, let you know what the last year has been like, but also let you know what our priorities are. You heard the councilmember talk a little bit about the priorities, and we were asked specifically to talk about housing and homelessness and safety. So, let me first thank you all for all of the ideas and challenges and questions that you have sent to our office over the last year. And just like any new administration, we spent all of last year really focused on laying the groundwork for the important things that you sent us down there to work on. So, we spent the first couple of months building a great team, and I'm always pleased when people compliment me on the people that we have been able to attract to work for our government. We then worked on the things that we inherited, some of them good and some of them in need of fixing. For example, we had a $190 million budget deficit that we had to work on to close. We had some big projects, and some of them could move forward, and some of them needed to be tweaked. We inherited something that I talk a lot about in Ward 6, the streetcar system, that needed a fresh set of eyes, and we're, we're working on, on that as, as well. But we also wanted to be able to make investments in new initiatives that I heard from you in neighborhoods across Washington. So, we sent to the council a pretty bold budget, that balanced the budget, of course, but also invested $100 million, which I have pledged every year that I'm mayor, into the Housing Production Trust Fund. We also made a very significant down payment on ending homelessness in Washington. And some people have asked me, "Why are you taking on something that seems so intractable?" The answer is, it is fixable, with the right people, the political will, and the willingness for all of us to step up and make that investment. So, in last year's budget, we indeed put down that down payment, and have spent all of last year really focused on how we could have a plan to work on one segment of the homeless population, and that's the family homeless population. And we especially heard in Ward 6 concerns around how families are living in DC General. We are also very focused on our schools and on public safety. We, the councilmembers were very vocal along a lot of issues related to schools, but especially around middle schools, and our ability to make investments in school construction. We have announced a number of things around schools that I'm happy to talk to you about as well. And finally, on safety, just like a lot of big cities, last year, we had a spike in crime, especially violent crime. We ended the year with crimes to tick six virtually flat, except in two very significant areas, violent crime and homicide, and a more modest uptick in robbery. So, we have also spent a number of months really focused on what we can do legislatively, what we can do with the budget, and what we can do with, with people power to make our, our neighborhoods safer and stronger. So, let me just turn real quickly to affordable housing. We already talked about the budget initiatives, and one thing that the councilmembers have challenged us to do is to make sure we can get the $100 million out the door, and we've been able to do that. We've been able to get the money to our development partners and build and preserve affordable housing faster than it's been done in previous administrations. Just last Friday, I announced another award of 80, over $80 million that will help us preserve housing that will serve 1,800 DC residents, so that's important. We'll make another such announcement of funds available in March, and there will be regular funds available. I talked to you a little bit about the homeless services initiatives, and our, our focus and our pledge to close DC General. How many people have heard about our plan to close DC General? You heard about it, is this news to you? Okay. You haven't heard about it? Okay. Well, then, now you're going to hear about it.
I have a plan to do the planning.
Oh, so you have heard about it?
I have heard about it.
Okay. That, well, my question was, have you heard about it? Okay. So the answer is yes, you've heard about it. So let me tell you how we're going to proceed. What I know is this, family homelessness is not just a Ward 6 problem, is it? Is it? Not just a Ward 5, it's not just a downtown problem, it's actually a citywide problem. And our commitment was to close DC General, because I've heard from people in every part of our city, every walk of life, that a city as prosperous as ours should not have families living in a former hospital. And I agree. What we in fact need is more humane, smaller units to really serve families, be a safe landing pad for them, so that they can deal with the issues that help find them in homelessness and move on quickly to permanent housing. And so what we have done is, over the last year, we have looked for locations throughout the city. Our pledge has been for an eight-ward strategy to deal with family homelessness. And I got to tell you, it hasn't been easy, and it won't be easy moving forward, but we have found locations that are suitable for families, that enhance neighborhoods, and will be small and humane settings to help people get back on their feet. So in the coming weeks, I will deliver to the council a piece of legislation that lays out this plan, lays out the locations, and helps us move forward. About 280 units will be identified, and we'll need all 280 units in all the locations that we identify in order to be able to close DC General. When we are able to do that and get all of those pieces through the council, we think that we have a plan to close DC General by 2018, which is significantly important for how we move our city forward. So we will, once we deliver that piece of legislation to the council, we will also schedule a series of meetings throughout the city to present this information, let people ask questions, and then lay out the process moving forward from there. So that's where we are with ending family homelessness. On schools, we have been very proud over the last year to really focus on a few initiatives. We see our children moving in the right direction, albeit not as fast as we would like to in some cases, and especially the case for boys. And so this fall, we will, we will launch a school for boys to focus on how boys learn and moving boys forward. That school is going to be in Ward 7 at the former Ron Brown Middle School. We also launched today a very important initiative that will provide children with more instruction time. So we selected 10 schools, elementary and middle schools, that will have an extended year. So instead of having 180 days of instruction, those schools will have 200 days of instruction. So the school year will be broken up into different periods, so that we don't experience the summer slide and some other learning that is lost over long breaks, and that's so that's very important. I'm also going to work with the councilmembers on really living up to our promises around school construction. So the schools that have waited and waited patiently for their turn for modernization, we have to have a budget that reflects what we have already promised, so we're focused on that. I was, I was pleased to work with councilmember Allen on parts of our Safer, Stronger initiative. And we launched together with the chief of police and other members of the public safety team, a robbery task force, where we are working with Metro, and we're working with the US Attorney, to make sure that robberies that are happening in our communities are actually prosecuted. And already, I think that we're seeing more conversation among all of those members of the public safety team, and we're very hopeful that that will lead to a safer Washington. And the council voted on parts of my public safety legislation, Safer, Stronger. I would have to admit that I'm disappointed that they left out some things that I thought were very important. They also moved on other pieces that they think are very important. So that was the first reading of that bill, so I'll be looking forward to working with the councilmembers on the elements that they think are important, that they want to fund, and how we can get more things that I think they missed the boat on. And that, the biggest example of that is making sure that we have the right and appropriate penalties for crimes on Metro. So I will continue to work with the councilmembers on making sure we have the right and appropriate penalties for crimes on Metro. So that is basically the update that I wanted to give, and I wanted to leave enough time for questions, as you see fit.
My name is Helen Douglas, and I'm from Arthur Caber Senior Building.
Good to see you again.
Yes. I wanted to know, what was the follow-up of the $500 million that was appropriated for rail services after the whole revelations that came from our CXX hearings? There was $500 million set aside about the study of rail, the metro studies between DC and Maryland and Virginia, and how that was, and the freight trains coming in and out of the city.
Well, that's not $500 million of our dollars, was that a federal study?
No, 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 that was part of the budget that was approved, with Mary Shay in the council last year, was working with Phil Meddleton, about, and it came out in the budget for this year.
Okay. I'm not sure if, I'm aware of that man, and I think that number, the number would be very high for a study.
Does Vincent, do you remember that?
Yeah.
I know.
Was it, okay. Let me find out, ma'am, a little bit more about that. And as I, as I pause for a second, I should note that many members of my administration are here, and they can stand, and I will also acknowledge that they're here, the deputy mayor, Kevin Donahue, is here, along with our human services director, Laura Zeilinger, as well as Chris Shorter, who is the DPW director, Allison Ladd is from the Department of Housing and Community Development, and Leif Dormcho from D-DOT. So where did she go? Oh, there you are. So let me, let me get the answer to your question. So it sounds like we put, or the council put some money for a study about freight. Okay. So let me, let me get the answer to that question. Yes, ma'am?
Hi. Thank you for all your efforts and everything that you've done. You are one powerful woman.
Thank you.
My, I want to say, I'm a longtime resident with Arthur Caber Curvesburg.
Yes.
We were moved out, replaced, and came back. A lot of our residents didn't come back because of credit check and even jobs was promised from some things that we needed to be able to hold our place in our community. With you speaking on the people over there in DC General?
Yes, ma'am.
How are you going to make sure that these people hold jobs, get their jobs, school their children, needs to be in school? You understand what I'm saying? My thing is, you all say that y'all have these places for these people over there, but how firmly are they going to be able to stay in there? Jobs, income, their children, some of them might have a criminal record. You all stipulated to us that if our children was in trouble, or we were in trouble, we couldn't come back to our community. And that is a big, big, big issue with the crime now, about people moving back into these communities. They don't, they don't want people that have a crime back into communities.
Yeah, so let me ask that question, because it is an important one. And there are communities in need of investment, right? And some of them are public housing communities, and what we have heard loud and clear is that while people want revitalization, they don't want displacement. And so oftentimes, and sometimes we've gotten it right, and sometimes we haven't, so let me just say that. And the other thing, a lot of times people don't come back because the projects take so long, that they've moved on to another community and have reestablished themselves. So part of making sure that people can come back is that we have realistic timelines, and they know when and how they can come back. Now, you asked me, when I'm going to give people a DC General job, right? You asked your question? So you do realize that the mayor does not have a big bag of jobs. But it is the mayor's job to make sure that we are creating jobs in this city, and that we're, let me finish, that we're training people so that they can have the types of skills that they need. Part of Laura's responsibilities at Human Services is working with people that are armed public assistants and who will cycle off. And so as much as I would like to say that it's easy and we're turning people out left and right, it's not as easy as that, because people in these programs have a lot of hurdles to employment, okay? And so we're working through all of those hurdles to employment. So what, what we have, what we have the moral obligation to do as a city, because that's the expression of our values, and also what our law requires, is that people who are homeless are entitled to shelter, okay? And they have found it, we have given a minimal shelter at DC General that's not really conducive to them getting on the right track. So when I talk about family housing, we believe in housing first. So before you have a job, before you deal with every other issue that got you homeless, people can deal with their issues better if they have stable housing. So first, we're going to get them in stable housing, and then we're going to help them launch into more permanent housing. A lot of the families at DC General, they don't, they don't have a lot of the issues that you see with people maybe out on the street. What they need is some structure, they need a job, they need a chance, and we can, we can work with them. Many, most of them are young enough, that if they get some stability, they have a safe place for their kids, and they get some skills, we can help them launch into a job.
Hey, Mayor Bowser.
Hi.
My name is Eliana Fishman, I live in Dupont Circle in Ward 2, and I'm so excited that the council right now is considering a paid family medical leave bill, which provides 16 weeks of paid family medical leave for every single person who lives or works in DC. What I'm scared about, though, is that over the course of council working through this bill, marking it up, we're going to lose some of the most important parts of the bill. But it's 16 weeks long, and it covers workers, and then it also covers residents, and also it has a progressive reimbursement rate. So I want to know, how can we make sure that those provisions stay in the bill?
Well, you have to figure out a way to pay for it. And right now, well, some would argue that we haven't, some would argue that we haven't.
So the Chamber of Commerce released numbers where they double counted a whole bunch of people, they double counted people who would both take TDI and would also take paid family medical leave, which you can't do. And they also, they also assumed that every single person who takes leave would take the full 16 weeks that are credited to them.
You don't think that's a safe assumption?
No, I don't.
Okay, okay.
Especially because we're offering a progressive reimbursement rate. So you're only going to be, you know, earning, if you, if you earn, if you earn, you know, $100,000 a year, or $75,000 a year, you're not going to be earning your full salary while you're out, you're only going to be earning 100% of the first $52,000 per year and 50% of the next $104,000.
So you will be earning 100% if you, if you make $52,000?
Yes.
Which is virtually unheard of, okay? Because it is an incentive, not, not for the people who want to use it correctly, they'll use it correctly, but it is a big incentive for people who will cheat. And so we have to be careful about that. We also have to look at, you know, what, we have no experience with a 16-week program anywhere in our country.
California has 16 weeks.
No, California is a disability-based program, and they don't, at any, at any level, make 100% of that. So, so when people say that California is analogous, that's just plain wrong. And so what, what we have said, and what we have put on the record, is that we want people to have leave, but we can't have people, we can't have a system that cannot support itself. And that's what, that's what we're very concerned about.
So there's no way that we're going to be able to move forward here?
No, it's at the council, as you know, and I understand that the council is working on the program. But if you've been following the hearings, the estimates are wild, literally. The bill that's before the council is basically so broad that our CFO will not certify it. I can't, I, so the council can't even vote on it if the CFO won't certify it. So right now, was at the council, if that's, you know, what your druthers are, is uncertifiable. He won't certify it. VO in councilmember Orange, councilmember Orange and councilmember Allen, they can't even vote on it. So we have to get something that the CFO says that per the law, and if you think this, the tax, they want to tax, you know, the employers have to pay more for tax, then it has to, it has to balance out. Right now, what's on the table, it won't balance out, and it would require the government to, to pay into it.
So what's the next step? How do we make this happen?
The next step is to come up with a plan, and it's okay, she can answer, the next step is to come up with a plan that balances out.
And what's that plan? What is it?
That would be up to the authors to figure out. And so it's at the legislature, if you have some suggestions, but I'm just telling you now, it doesn't balance out. And you don't have to, you don't have to believe me, look at the, I commend everybody to look at the chief financial officer's testimony, because currently what the law says is, a person can have 16 weeks off for having a baby, then a person could have 16 weeks off because a family member got sick, then a person could have 16 weeks off because they got sick, then a, yes, that's what, that's what the proposal says. So I just, I just want everybody to look at why the CFO won't certify the proposal. Yes?
Hi, I'm Lakita, I just wanted to know, is it possible to have a private meeting with you? If so, how can I arrange that?
Sure, Seth can take that. And about every month, every six weeks or so, I have community office hours, where you just notify our office, and we, we can get you 15 minutes with me.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi, Ms. Mayor.
Hi.
The last time we saw each other, it was at a, it was at an amazing press conference you had at Eastern Market, talking about crime. And I asked a question that day to the Department of Justice, and said, you know, I've FOIA'd you for prosecution data, when can I expect to receive a response? And the DOJ representative at the time said, "Well, we know about your FOIA, and we believe, we're strong opponents of transparency." Well, about two weeks ago, I received a response from the Department of Justice, they couldn't find any data. They literally checked a box and said, "We did a search of relevant records, and we can't find any information about prosecutions of crimes in Washington DC." So I kind of scratched my head at the time, and I said, "Really? Are you sure?" So I appealed it, and I guess what I'm asking for you right now is, will you support the appeal? I kind of find it a little crazy, they can't find the information about prosecutions. And the other request I have, and I asked it of councilmember Allen a few minutes ago, was, would you support my change.org petition? I think it's crazy I have to do this, but if it takes a change.org petition to get DOJ to start compiling data?
How specific was your request? It was a, it was a period of time? Was it sort of five years?
I asked for five years, could you tell me the prosecutions of rapes, murders, deaths, assault, the big ones?
All right, why don't Kevin and you and I have a, have a conversation about what we can get?
Thank you.
You bet. Hi.
Hi, I'm Paul. Is there anything like the city can do, maybe, to help elderly homeless people?
Yes.
Out here, that some of them are elderly, well, of course, disabled, have no place to go, and they have some income, and they can get into places, but certain parts of the city, they're afraid to go into, like get robbed. I have a roommate that, you know, he doesn't want to go in certain places because he's afraid.
So your question, you just don't want to go into shelter?
Well, yeah, shelters are hard for elderly persons, because they have rules, you got to get up at 5:00 AM and go to bed at, you know, a certain time, and those things, yeah, one eye open, you never know what's going to happen.
I think it is certainly one of my goals, that we don't have any seniors in shelter. Now, how we get there, we'll stay focused on, absolutely.
Hi.
Hi, I'm Heather Schultz, and I want to thank you for coming tonight, and I want to thank you for coming to Elliot Harvey, when you did, and doing the walkthrough there here, doing the broadcast, the science labs that you helped work, work on getting us. They were supposed to be done in September, they're still not even near, they're not even half done, but anyway. My, my idea that I think would be really great for, for housing is to have affordable housing for first responders and our full-time DCPS teachers. They have to live so far out because they, their income isn't commensurate with housing values here, so if there was a space that they, that could be dedicated to them, then on days when there was snow or something like that, it would make that, they'd make it that much easier for them to be here in the city.
That's a great idea, and we recently had a conversation about this, and we're looking for programs, especially for police, while we're heavily recruiting. And we're looking for programs, especially for police, while we're heavily recruiting police. So stay tuned, there's more to come on that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hi, how are you?
Hi.
I'm Dennis Stevenson, American Legion, Post Six, Post Eight, excuse me. Two-fold questions. What are we doing for veterans that's eligible but have problems finding property in DC?
Well, veterans have a lot of access to a lot of different financing. So I would have to know a little bit more specifically what problems they're having.
Okay, can, would you, could you explain to me the scattered housing program? How does that work and how do you get information on that program?
Scattered housing?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to have Laura come up and talk a little bit more. Are you talking about for homeless or permanent supportive housing?
No, this is scattered housing through the district.
Okay.
Could be, yes.
Why don't you come up to this microphone, Laura?
So I think the question is about how veterans who are experiencing homelessness access housing vouchers and services in the community. So there's a program that is federally funded called HUD-VASH that provides that. We have a collaboration with the VA and with a number of community partners. So if there's any veteran who is experiencing homelessness, we actually have a coordinated process to understand their needs and connect them to the programs that they're eligible for. They can go to the VA CRC, their Central Resource and Referral Center, to get connected, and they can also get connected through the Department of Human Services. We have a table outside as well as a couple of staff people here from DHS who can take information and give you a point of contact for them.
Sure, thank you. You bet.
Hi, Albert Hall, St. James Mutual Home, Ward Six. Just wanted to ask a question. Is there any money in your budget for providing housing subsidies for senior citizens, low-income senior citizens and personal disability, specifically for low-income senior citizens and persons with disability, housing subsidies for them?
Yes, all of our voucher programs, and we specifically, I think, set aside some of the voucher programs with senior voucher programs.
Like how many? Would you know?
I don't know off the top of my head, but what specifically?
Well, a friend of mine, a dear friend of mine, is a senior citizen and he needs some help because it's kind of difficult to survive off of social security, it's not...
I got it, I got it. And so I will say that we have to do more work around senior rental issues. So there's a lot of benefits for senior homeowners and property owners in the tax code, the property tax code. But we, I hear increasingly that seniors with increasing rents are finding it harder and harder. So I think there's still some things, and I'll work with the council around how we can help seniors close that gap.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, Mayor.
Hi.
Calvin Ward, Commissioner Ward, Six Eight Oh Eight. My question is pretty much, it revolves around homelessness. As we all know that, you know, pricing, apartment rentals in the city is sky through the roof. It's pushing a lot of families into homelessness. Apparently, DC General, I believe, had two-hundred-and-fifty, two-hundred-and-thirty homeless families. The city has maybe a little over, from what I've read, seven-hundred-and-fifty homeless families. My question, I guess, is, how do you, I mean, what concrete plan your administration have to combat homelessness for the families, for the new families that seem to be going into...
Did you just get here, Commissioner?
Say again.
I've talked about this a little bit already.
Well, okay, all right, well, if you can just elaborate. I mean, my question pretty much is as simple. I just want to know, you know, a concrete, I want to hear, I haven't heard anything concrete. I just want to hear something concrete. What's your plan to combat homelessness for the people that may be facing this issue? There's a lot of individuals that's really struggling right now. And I just recently read an article that was pretty much disturbing to me. It was, it talked about the homeless issue on New York Avenue, DC setting up houses for people on, for people to stay in motels. I didn't know that you all had a budget for that. It was like fifteen million dollars set aside. This is according to the Washington Post. So it said you guys had a budget set aside to house homeless people in hotels and motels on New York Avenue. I just wanted to know if you had something, I just want to hear something concrete.
All right, I'm going to have Laura talk. We have talked about this, but we can talk about it again.
Could you also elaborate on, I believe it's Initiation Act Seventeen? Could you elaborate?
What is that?
Well, it's apparently, it was some budget, I mean, some legislation DC voted on back in nineteen eighty-four. It was to set up homeless, set up housing for homeless specifically in hotels and motels around the city. So if you're not aware of that, it's in the Washington Post. I mean, they did an article on this maybe like a week ago.
No, I read the article, so if you're talking about the law that requires us to house people during hypothermia season?
Yeah.
Okay, we have a law that's...
It's Initiation Act Seventeen.
I don't think that's accurate, but I'll let Laura talk about it.
I think it would be helpful to share what some of our concrete, specific plans are. We do have a strategic plan, I encourage you to take a look at it. It's called Homeward DC that lays out a number of strategies. So what we, part of it is homelessness prevention. So we've launched a new homelessness prevention initiative this year so that when people come applying for homeless services, oftentimes they're beginning to experience a crisis, but we can still help them solve their housing without a shelter stay. Since we've launched that program over the summer, we've helped seven-hundred families without them having to come into shelter, who came into Virginia Williams seeking services. So we're doing a lot of work on the prevention side. Now, there's a lot of need out there, and part of what we've done is we've changed our policies. Families have a right to shelter during hypothermia season, that is in the law, it's in the Homeless Services Reform Act. And so if a family presents and they have no safe place to be, it is our legal obligation to provide them a space and to provide it in a private room. And that might also be, it's not a nineteen eighty-eight law, but so that's part of why we have to overflow into motels because we have legal requirements about how we shelter families in a room that is their own. We also have huge investments in the housing programs that help families exit shelter. So we have expanded our rehousing programs, we've made a number of improvements to rapid rehousing, and we've invested in housing and services, permanent supportive housing, for those families that have disability and need help in the long run. So we're working with the entire system. The mayor talked a lot about our strategies on closing DC General. So what happens when a family comes into crisis? How we help them faster and move them out faster also allows us to help more families within our shelter system and not have to overflow. But we have had to do a complete system overhaul, and we have a number of concrete strategies. That's just kind of an overview to help you understand a little bit what that is. I'm happy to talk in more detail as well. And would encourage folks to take a look at the strategic plan. It's concrete and it's actionable, and we are moving it forward.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Bowser. Thank you for addressing the good citizens in this forum, we appreciate it. Also, I want to thank you for the positions that you and your administration have taken with regard to our public safety. You've struck the absolute right note. Aside from lobbying, you know, our good friends on the council like the Honorable Vincent Orange, how can we further, when I say we, citizens in all eight wards, how can we support your efforts to really move public safety forward in a way that actually protects all of us without getting into any political conflicts? And my second question is, what's a comment? The conversation about affordable housing is very deeply intertwined with public safety because most of the city's affordable housing, when I talk about affordable rentals, five hundred, six hundred dollars a month, seven hundred, eight hundred, nine hundred, they're in areas that are impacted, heavily impacted by public safety challenges. So I think that coupling of those important issues needs to be elevated.
All right, and I got it. And what was very clear to me in our conversations across neighborhoods is that the pressure on housing prices is the most significant challenge facing our city. It creates huge anxieties. And we are a city that is prosperous, let me be very clear. We're growing, a thousand people move here net, we gain a thousand people every month. Businesses are moving here, we've seen our unemployment numbers dip just last year by one percent. So many people in Washington DC are doing very well. But the gap between those who are not is not getting smaller, it's growing. And so that growing gap creates a pressure, and it creates in people anger and unrest that come out in all kinds of ways. So having said that, we have to work on those issues. Improving our schools, getting people in job training, getting people in good-paying jobs, investing in affordable housing, all of that has to happen. But while that happens, we cannot tolerate disorder, and people have to follow the rules. And so we're doing it all. We're investing in opportunity, but we're also very serious about keeping our city safe. And so the package that I sent to the council will make sure that we can keep our police numbers at a level where they should be. So the council is going to move one of the pieces as an emergency in a couple of weeks, which will be helpful. We wanted more power to look at illegal guns, and we're still going to do and look at more ways to deal with illegal guns. I'm very, very serious about our concentration on Metro. That's why I asked the council for enhanced penalties for crimes against Metro, but they don't want to do that, okay? So we'll do what we have to do in terms of presence and enforcement. The chief has worked with our MPD and Metro on some hot spots. There are some Ward Six hot spots on that list around Metro stations where our schools are related or have school resource officers around those Metro stations and on the platforms as well. And there's more that we want to do around that issue as well. I have also asked, as it relates to the commissioner who asked about prosecutions, the council has given more ability to the prosecutors where there is a repeat offender and questioned again for another crime, to hold that person up to seventy-two hours until the prosecutors and judge can make a determination on their fitness to be in the community. So part of that is happening. And we also put a million dollars out in grassroots community organizations to work with young people, to work to keep them in productive environments. So it's not either or, it's not investment in opportunity or investment in enforcement, it's both, it's both. And so we're going to stay focused on that. Oh, and I failed to mention that councilmember Allen, I may have mentioned it earlier, worked with us to pull one part of my bill out and move it as an emergency. And that's the piece that allows for rebates for security cameras on residences and businesses, which we got through the council.
Thank you.
You bet.
I'm E. Dawes, Mayor Bowser, I'm the executive director of the Community for Creative Nonviolence. And that is a shelter that's also in Ward Six.
Yes.
And on any given night, you provide homeless services for a single individual, up to about a thousand.
Yes.
I've been hearing some conversation in the district government that I think, I can't say not fairly assessed, but I got some information that I think need to be presented to you.
Okay.
I've been homeless and dealing with the homeless situation for about fifteen years. But now I'm trying to do the best that I can as far as homeless services, especially in DC. But there is some information, being homeless, being on that side, that I think that you need to hear.
Okay.
And I would like to know what that day is that you said earlier, that there was a day that I could get fifteen minutes?
Yeah, we schedule it throughout the year. So if you just send us an email with a short description, or you can call us, about what you want to talk about, and then we can schedule you.
Okay, is that any day?
No, it's not any day.
What day is that?
It depends, it depends on my schedule. And so basically what we'll do is that, yeah, I have to call you back.
I have that fifteen minutes.
Okay, I got it, what's your name?
Rico Harris.
All right, Mr. Harris, I'll look for your request.
All right.
I'm Frank Grayton, Ward Six resident. I pastor a church in Ward Seven. And like everyone else in the city, we are overrun with requests for help from people. Our challenge is, we don't know where to steer them. They're questions and they have needs that our church isn't equipped to help them with, and we think we know what we're doing. And we get run around from facilities and can't get questions answered and things like that. So we're trying to help people who have limited means, they don't have time to kind of make their way around. So it just kind of seems like they're in a no-man's land of the church that don't know what to do to help them. And we don't know always, you know, when we send them to seesaw so they don't get the help that they're looking for or things like that. And the second part of that is, is there ever been a thought process of when a person becomes employed? Well, let me back up. They become employed because they get their spiritual background together, and so they are drug-free and whatever else. And then they become employed, and the employment ultimately pulls them away from what got them on their feet in the first place. So we see a problem where they become employed, but then they lose their spirituality, and then they lose their employment ability, which kind of come back to us almost in the same spot that they were, if that makes sense.
Okay, I don't, I'm not sure what you're asking me.
I'm asking you, is there some kind of way that they can get the job, and we want them to have a job, but they don't have to lose connection with their spirituality because they have to have a job when they can't come for to be spiritual? So they're not high in, what I'm saying is, they're not high in skills, so they have to take the job that they can get, which means that Sundays is not available and things like that.
I'm not sure how to answer this question, Pastor, in a way that's going to be acceptable to you, but I would argue that they need a job and that they can find spirituality every day of the week. That would be, that's just Mayor Bowser answering you, because Mayor Bowser wouldn't necessarily take a position on that, other than they need to get a job.
What about the first part of it?
The first part of the question is, where is your church?
Minnesota Avenue.
What's it called?
Edgewood Baptist.
Okay, so why don't we have our Ward Seven mayor's liaison come and visit your church and your staff to kind of give you orientation on how to tap into government services?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We have a question on behalf of one of the audience members. The former Boys and Girls Club, which is located at Seventeenth and Mass, actually, there was a RFP out on it that had been taken back in two thousand and fifteen. And the question is, as far as, would you support or encourage any use of the building to be used for low-income housing, affordable housing, or senior housing for this building?
Now, I know that we weren't part of the RFP, and there was considerable community consternation, I think, about the selected project. So it's now with DMPED, Chuck, and we will restart the process. And so I think, I haven't gotten a report back from the staff of any other use that's being considered other than housing. But as you know, any government, any government land deal, there is thirty percent affordable housing required.
Hi. How are you?
Great.
Francis Campbell. I have, I guess, a couple of questions. When Reservation Thirteen, now Hill East, was in my S and D, there was a number of things that we were trying to do as far as support development. Now, I see development all over the city, especially south, it's a waterfront. And Skyline Project, Matt, the twenty-five is finally getting a kickoff. And we have the F-1G One Parcel that's being hopefully started this year. And we have the F-1G one parcel that's being hopefully started this year. And I believe Annoxmont Hall has its story designation and used to be nursing cells back in the forties. Now, as far as you were talking about the homes issue, is there any money in the budget, say, to help rehab that building possibly as one particular site for homeless? And then too, is there any plan to do any further development or spur development for the rest of Reservation 13?
Well, as we have discussed, Commissioner, we think that the successful launch of the first two parcels is very important. That parcel has had fits and starts over the years. It was originally envisioned to partner with a developer for the entirety of the parcel. That didn't work out so well. But now we have a very concrete plan for those two parcels. There's a lot of energy around. And we think that the successful launch of those is going to really garner the type of interest that we need for the remainder of the parcel. So we are very focused on Hill East. I told you I'd be focused on Hill East. One of the first things that we got out of the office when I was mayor was signing the agreement with the selected developer for Hill East. And we'll continue to stay focused on it. We don't anticipate at this time any homeless services.
Do we have any other questions? I know we solved all the problems tonight, so I'm sure that...
Well, thank you. I want to thank everybody here. So let me just say, in wrapping up, that there are all kinds of opportunities for you to stay involved, and I invite your participation. We're coming up on the budget and we will announce shortly three budget engagement forums. Our administration wants your input before I finalize the budget and send it to the council in hopes that our budget can reflect your priorities as well. So thank you and stay tuned. And let me also say thank you and acknowledge the chairman of the council who has arrived, Phil Mendelson, and the at-large council member for housing, Anita Barnes.
If, I just had a couple of comments. I would like to, we have a wealth of council members in the House right now. And this is a perfect opportunity, because you read every day in the newspaper the different legislation that's getting introduced. And we by chance do have our at-large council members here who are very well versed in affordable housing and public safety and have served admirably on the council. I would like to ask first, maybe if council member Barnes would come up and speak and say a few words. And then if we could have council member Orange, and then if there were any additional questions, we could possibly have those answered and wrap up, so.
Well, thank you all, and thank you for staying the course. But of course, you had the real treat earlier in that you had the mayor here, the mayor who implements everything in our government. And so you're very, very fortunate. I think she did a fabulous job, and I think we ought to give her a big round of applause. I for one am very proud because she is a woman. A woman. All right, and I'm saying that because I see this row of women here, and I know that that's important to you too. Well, this evening, I was to talk to you a little bit, I guess, about housing. As you probably know, I'm chair of the Housing and Community Development Committee. And it's a big honor for me, because it's a subject that I've been concerned about for years and have worked with people for years. For those of you who do not know me well, I've been around in the local government for a few decades, I'll say. And through that process, have always had the occasion to try and solve problems for people. Well, now I'm on the side where I have to solve it through the paper process, through the legislative process, creating laws that I hope will make a difference for you. I joined the council through an appointment in December of 2012. And one of the first things I recognized was the plight of many of our seniors who were paying exorbitant property taxes and just really could not make ends meet. And so I put together legislation for that, was lucky enough to get it through the council with ten votes, get it in the budget, and then it gets back to the council. And what did we do at the council? At the council, we said, well, there are categories of individuals that need assistance. So the eight thousand individuals that I was hoping to help directly kind of got pushed to the side. But it was for a good cause, because we were able through some of the tax triggers to help the very low-income communities and reduce taxes there. And I know we're in this together and we have to help each other. So I had to suck it up, so to speak, and move to the next level. And so that's what I've attempted to do. I haven't forgotten my seniors and will do everything that I can to assist them. Also, I remember during the, I guess it was 2013, that I had the occasion to become close to what I call the yellow shirts. Those individuals who are advocates for, advocates for full housing opportunities, I'll call it that. And one of the things that they asked of then council member Bowser, who was running for mayor, and Anita, who was running, myself, who was running for council, to support a hundred million dollars in the Housing Production Trust Fund. And the mayor, who was going to be mayor, agreed, and I did as well. And so the rest is history, as you well know. We have that pot of money and nearly all of it has been allocated for this year. And we have a few more projects that will come online. What I am saying to you is that the commitment for affordability in housing is strong at the council. I'm working very hard to do all that I can. I'm working in concert with the mayor and her various agencies, and that is DACD, which you all probably know well. The Housing Finance Agency is another part of the committee, as well as the, what we call the DC Housing Authority, our public housing stock, along with the Office on Aging and another group of constituencies, the Latino community, Asian Pacific Islanders, the veterans, women, LGBTQ community, and of course, our ANC's. So I will stop there. In the event you have a question or two for me, but remember, I don't implement anything. You had the person here who would implement anything. All I can do is be one of your strongest advocates for affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Barnes. And as I said, also, we have also a few words from Council Chair Phil Mendelson. And after that, if anyone has any questions, we'll take them at that time. Oh, we'll have it after, we're going to have, just be sure to other speakers, then we can finish up. I would like at this time to another at-large council member who has served admirably over the years, and his experience is great in a number of these different areas we're discussing tonight. Like council member Warren.
All right, well, good evening, Ward 6 Democrats. It is an honor and a pleasure for me to be here with you. And as you can see, one of the attributes of being a good council member, in my view, is being a good listener. So I've been listening to all of you for over an hour, and I think it's been very informative just to hear the questions and the exchanges. I'm going to be brief because the hour is late, but I did take some notes down on some of the things that you were talking about tonight. I understand this is supposed to be about crime and housing. And so from my perspective, in order to help reduce crime, you have programs that provide people an opportunity to do things. And I would say there's three things that we've been doing, such as the clean teams, which you're very familiar with. The returning citizens mostly make up the clean teams here on Capitol Hills, the men in blue. Downtown, it can be the men in red, white, and blue. If you go triangle, it can be yellow and gray. And working with the mayor and others, we've been able to get that living wage up to now thirteen dollars and eighty-four cents per hour. And a lot of them come down and testify and say, this has been great for us, this is a second chance. I can now, when my kid asks me for a dollar, I can go in my pocket, give him a dollar, five dollars. I own my own car for the first time, and I actually have an apartment. Another thing that we've been working on, that we've been pushing very hard, is to extend the Marion Berry Summer Youth Employment Program to bring in our twenty-two and twenty-four year olds. And just last year, the government was able to make contact with two thousand five hundred twenty-two to twenty-four year olds. That's unheard of. They actually contacted the government, filed the application. We know who they are, we want to work with them. And in my view, I think they all should have an opportunity to come in and work, although the council has limited to one thousand. But to make contact with this population, I think, is a great achievement for the government, and we should be working harder to now get them involved in the system. Of the eight hundred eighty-four that actually received summer youth employment programs, thirty-five percent of them have now, are now receiving year-round employment, so working around the clock. And as you know, Rome was not built in one day. So yes, there may be some kinks, but we're working on it, and these young people are engaging us. Just last week, council member Alan, your council member here from Ward 6, he hung in there with me. I had a hearing on incarceration to incorporation, because a lot of our returning citizens can't get hired, because people don't want to take a chance on them, but they do have skills. We just need to channel those skills in the right direction. So we are now proposing that we set up a fund, so they can learn how to develop business plans, introduce them to attorneys and CPAs, and let them go out and start their own businesses. You heard that old proverb, "I can give you a fish, and you're going to eat for today. If I give you that pole, you will eat forever." And that's the same thing that we need to be looking at. The mayor has indicated that she now has two hundred and eighty units that she will have across the city to address the homeless issues. That's two hundred and eighty units. Now we have to see if the council is going to pass this, but at least there is a plan in this being tackled. Eighty million dollars have been announced last week, I believe it was a thousand units?
Eight hundred.
Eight hundred units. And so that's another way to tackle it. I would like to see us get the new communities built. That would be one thousand six hundred and forty-five affordable housing units for our people. Because that's what we promised, and we're doing everything else, we need to keep those promises. I've also introduced legislation that passed the council that would produce the profile of the unemployed. We have twenty-five thousand unemployed people, but how can we help them if we can't, if we don't know their profile, so we can connect them to the jobs that are coming online? So we expect that that will be funded, we'll get the profile. We've been told that we will create or fill one hundred thousand new jobs by the beginning of fiscal year 2018. So if that's the case, our twenty-five thousand unemployed people, we should be training them for those jobs, so we can connect them and it all come together. And lastly, before I take my seat, I'm really into housing. I sit on the Housing Committee under the leadership of Ms. Barnes, but I've also, I'm looking at this new concept of the tiny houses. And the tiny houses can be up to six hundred square feet. That is a nice size. Six hundred square feet. If you go to a hotel, it's about two hundred square feet. And most of the average of the tiny homes are around three hundred, three hundred and fifty square feet. But the beauty about this is, you can get the top of the line was built at fifty thousand dollars. And our minimum wage population that's going to be making eleven dollars and fifty cents per hour starting July one, and our living wage population is thirteen dollars and eighty-four cents per hour, they can afford these tiny houses at the fifty thousand dollar level. The mortgage will be about five hundred to seven hundred dollars per month. And if you look at the disposable income that they will have available for them, they can in fact have that. So you take the tiny house, along with the tiny car, and you in business. You know? And if you happen to have a spouse, you and your spouse and a little one can live in a six hundred square foot house. And gas is getting so cheap, you can probably drive for a whole month on one tank. And so we're putting more disposable income in your pocket. And just look to what they're doing in Dallas. Dallas, they built their entire tiny house community for their homeless population, and they put the wraparound services in the middle of the complex. And so it's all there in one place, and it's three acres, it cost them seven million dollars. So I just want to tell you that we have to keep on thinking outside the box. We have to come up with concrete programs, we have to look at best practices around the city. And as the mayor has indicated, it's all about a fresh start, moving in the right direction, all of us in this together. Because we can't do it by ourselves. We have to come together and fight as a community and do things that can help us move our agenda and provide not only a pathway to the middle class, but for our young people, in my view, a pathway to middle school success. And that's the only way we can do that, if we ensure that our young people upon entering the fourth grade can read independently, and they can add, subtract, multiply, and divide. Because if you can't do that, you cannot make the transition. When the transition is, you're no longer learning to read, you're reading to learn. If you cannot add, subtract, multiply, and divide, I cannot introduce you to decimals, fractions, for you to move on. So it's a comprehensive approach to all this. It's a big problem, but we can do it if we all work together and we spend our dollars wisely. So thank you very much, Ward 6 Democrats, for giving me an opportunity to come out and present myself. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And as a Realtor, I'm all for tiny houses, so I think that's a great idea. I'd be remiss not to recognize Elliott Heine Middle School. There are five students here tonight, and this is on the Elliott Heine School Network. They've been broadcasting and streaming this performance on the internet, and it's been broadcast over the radio. And I'm sure copies will be available for all if you'd like. But I would like to applaud these students. I have a personal affection for Heine. That's where I met my wife, so I think that was quite good. But I think it's great that they're doing. At this time, I would like to, of course, invite our DC Council Chair at this time, Phil Mendelson. Thank you so much.
Good evening. I'm going to try to be brief as well. I'm going to talk about a couple of issues. First of all, thank you all for being here. The council today had a hearing on the comprehensive annual financial report. This sounds a little boring, but this is the annual audit that's done on the city's finances, how we ended up the fiscal year that closed last September thirtieth. It's actually a very good picture, and it's a good picture in a couple of ways. First of all, once again, we ran a surplus. The surplus was about two hundred and eighty-three million dollars. Before you think that means there's a lot of money on the table to spend, one of the things we did when we adopted the budget for the current fiscal year was to carry forward about two hundred and fifty million dollars. So that speaks for a lot of the surplus, most of the surplus, as a matter of fact. We have continued to maintain our rainy day fund, which I think is important, especially since, even though the economy looks like it continues to grow, others point out that this is the longest cycle of growth without a recession, or the second longest cycle of growth without a recession in this country, in the history of this country, perhaps. So we always need to be mindful of the fact that we want to ensure that we have a rainy day fund. But it is a very healthy picture for the city in terms of our finances. Our population continues to grow, and discipline within the government in terms of spending and how the agencies are controlling their spending continues to improve. This is sort of a boring part of the audit, but the audit looks at what are often called material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. And for the first time in my memory, and that goes back a couple of decades, there were no material weaknesses and no significant deficiencies. Not only a clean audit, but an audit that reflects that we have improved management significantly. That's a testament to hard work of the Uh, that's a, uh, a testament to hard work of the Bowser administration and the city administrator, Rashad Young, to really work hard at trying to clean up some of the, uh, processes that were criticized by the auditor in the past. The other issue that I want to touch on, many of you know that last fall, a bill was introduced in the council, Universal Paid Leave. It was introduced by a majority of the council members, co-sponsored by others. Um, the idea behind Universal Paid Leave, it's similar to, I'm gonna say uninsured in term, excuse me, um, unemployment insurance, in terms of having a fund, uh, to which a payroll tax is dedicated, out of which those employees in the District of Columbia who need to take extraordinary leave, let's say for pregnancy, or maybe for a very serious chronic disease, that they can, um, do that paid. We have right now in the law sixteen weeks where a person can take family medical leave, but it's unpaid. And if you think about it, how many people can take leave for sixteen weeks when it's unpaid, especially if you're a lower-income worker? It doesn't work. Under our federal, our, our Family Medical Leave Act, you can't be fined, but you won't get paid. And with this bill, the idea is that one could get paid. Now, there are a lot of details to this and a lot of controversy around it, because the way the bill's structured, many people are saying that the benefits are so generous that, uh, there will be a huge, uh, a take-up rate, if you will, of people who take advantage of this, and that it would cost way more than what the payroll tax is projected to be. And meanwhile, the business community is saying that if, if we have a payroll tax of one percent, a payroll, that's equivalent to restoring a one percent, uh, tax rate to businesses in the city. Uh, and we've been trying to actually get the tax rate down to be competitive with Maryland. Uh, so there's some issues around it, but I expect that this legislation in some form will pass the council, probably not as generous as what was introduced, but that we will establish a leave program that guarantees, uh, paid leave of some length of time for those who work in the district. If you think about it, benefits for employees are considered by many employers to be important. Why else is it that Google, for example, offers weeks and weeks of leave, uh, for, like, a pregnancy or for, uh, family leave where, like, a parent is seriously ill? And we're seeing this with a lot of the large corporations, that they're offering eight weeks or sixteen weeks. We're seeing it with some of the law firms in the city, that they offer for pregnancy maybe sixteen weeks of paid leave. That's because employers see an advantage to offering benefits, it's a way of attracting employees and retaining employees, because even though I may not, uh, ever need, in my case, it would be paternity leave, uh, the fact that that benefit's available makes that, that, uh, work more attractive for me to, uh, apply for, and then for me to stay with the employer. So, just think of it more broadly than just an employer, think of it as all employers in the District of Columbia. If we can come up with the right balance between cost and benefits, then the district will be a more attractive place for workers, and therefore, a more attractive place for employers to locate their businesses in the district. So we're working on that, we're gonna have a hearing next week with a lot of witnesses. Uh, we continue to try to refine the bill. Uh, I don't have a date for when we're gonna mark it up, but I do expect that the legislation will be, um, marked up this year. Happy to take questions when the time is right for that. Thank you all.
Yeah, I was going to suggest, uh, just due to the hour, uh, but also, I think it's phenomenal that we have our two at-large council members here, who are our representatives in Ward Six also, two votes for Ward Six, and also the DC Council Chair Phil Mendelson. So I would like a round of applause to thank them for coming here to see. And all of Ward Six's members. But, uh, as I said, uh, they'll be here, they'll, they're gonna skip the round. Any questions for them, uh, directly? Also, some of the questions that we didn't get tonight, uh, we're gonna be circulating those questions, as I said, to get those answers, but I would like to thank all of you for coming out in this horrible weather tonight, and I think we had a very productive time, and I'd like a, another round for our speakers this evening. Thank you, and have a good evening.